So now, all over the world, you know Jamie Oliver. He's probably the most famous celebrity chef of them all. But not just that. This is a young guy who was just 24 when he started to take unemployed youngsters and teach them to be chefs and created his 15 foundation. He was only 24. He's a tireless campaigner for your health. He's taken on the challenge of finding solutions of what we need to do with our food for the future. How we grow it, how we eat it, and how we think about it. He's been a fantastic friend to One Young World over the last three years. And despite the fact that he couldn't actually be here in person today, he was so determined to make this his third summit dinner row. So as David says, we're going to be linking up with him by satellite. And so that he can see all of you, okay? We're going to be turning one of the cameras around, so it's going to be looking at you, okay? So got to really hang in there because if Jamie's talking to lots of people who've walked out of the room, it'll be tragic. But I would like you to take a look at this film about the food revolution which Jamie started.
Imagine a world where any person had the same access to a happy, healthy, long life, rich or poor, regardless of race or religion. Where children were fed real food and it was nutritious at school. Where real food was as readily available as junk.
It's easier to get a gun, crack, or prostitute in a lot of areas of Los Angeles before you can get a tomato.
Where milk is just milk and not riddled with more sugar and additives than soda. Where chicken could just be chicken and the ingredients list did not read like a scientific equation.
What's wrong with that?
What's right with that? Would you eat that?
Yes.
Yeah, I think they're good.
Who knows what this is?
I don't know.
Do you know what that is? What do you think this is?
I don't know.
We're talking about basic stuff. I need you to know that this is going to kill your children early. Yeah, we're talking about 10, 13, 14 years off their life. On the planet at the moment, well certainly one of the biggest killers is diet-related disease. And the most disgusting thing about it is it's preventable.
See, he's showing some signs already. So it's very likely that he will develop diabetes if he doesn't have it already.
In America, they've come up with a piece of technology that can turn this bone, all the connective tissues, little bits of bone marrow and stuff like that, into something that ends up in your school food.
We don't want to sit around and eat lettuce all day.
Yeah, but I'm not going to cook you a lettuce. I just don't think that you should come in here and tell us what to do. I mean, I'm talking about a seed of change.
For the last seven years, I've worked fairly tirelessly to save lives in my own way. I'm not a doctor. I'm a chef. I don't have expensive equipment or medicine. I use information, education. Hi, kids. How are you?
Excellent.
Well done. I'm going to go to my little friend at the back who I went to see the other day.
Tomato.
Brilliant. Okay, little sweetie. Well done, well done.
This is my first time cooking ever. If you're careful with the tools, you're old enough to be in the kitchen.
Yeah, luscious.
That's the first thing I've ever cooked in my life. Is it the first time you picked up a pan?
Yes.
When you empower a community or a country to expect more, to know more, even some of what you might call the bad guys start becoming good.
McDonald's is announcing that it's no longer going to use something that's called pink slime.
Last week, McDonald's announced it's no longer using the controversial beef.
I never grew up thinking that I'd be having conversation with the Obamas and going to Number 10 Downing Street. I never thought that was me.
The money's there, the plan's there.
It's time to stop talking and put your money where you're supposed to. End the school meal service.
It started off not in food, but with young people, giving young people opportunities.
It went from a 17, 18-year-old kid with no direction to running a restaurant.
Look at yourself. Look at your family. What can you do to inspire education, inspire change?
We're planning a big picnic.
Having some chef demonstrations in some of the classrooms.
Go local, get fresh ingredients, and cook.
Oh my goodness, you guys are doing new. Good job.
You want to have them stay is probably the biggest thing I've ever done in my life.
It tastes really good. I love it.
Good.
Beautiful.
I like it.
So one of the wonderful things about live-streamed global events is that when you lose a satellite link, you have to wing it and busk in front of the world, the hundreds of thousands of people or so watching everyone in this room. So as we try and connect the satellite link, this is what we're going to do. Kate's going to talk a little bit about Jamie. If we manage to get the link up, we'll go to Jamie. If not, we'll bring on the panel and do the panel. And then when we get the satellite link up and running, we'll go to that. Obviously, satellite links work absolutely seamlessly and perfectly in rehearsal and not quite as well when they need to. But Kate, why don't you talk about Jamie and...
Jamie really one of my personal heroes. And I'll never forget seeing him start the 15 program all those years ago when he was just 24. And here I'm watching somebody who's dealing with a not easy bunch of young people, some of whom weren't really bothered that they were getting the chance to learn to cook and have a job. They were just sort of like on the make and on the take. And Jamie's patience and lack of judgment and the way he drove personally to their homes to find them when they didn't show up for work and carried on trying to help them, put his own money into his foundation and then put some more, then built a kitchen, built a restaurant where these young people could actually work and kept on going. Just 24. And you know, you could stop and think, well, hey, he did that thing, set up a foundation, there are people there, they're going to teach people how to cook, get jobs. Hey, great, job done. He's made his contribution. But it was the start of a journey for an absolutely remarkable young man who, in his work, started to become engaged with the fact that school meals in the United Kingdom, which is not a poor country, were of a very poor quality nutritionally and that this was clearly a problem for those children at school because they weren't performing particularly well, they weren't being very good in class, they weren't very energized. And you know, I see lots of you nodding, this is a universal problem. So Jamie's concern with that became a campaign to government, shocked the government in Britain of the day, the Blair government, into changing its policy on school meals. They changed their policy. It's been tightly changed back again. He's been let down in some areas. But you never go through a day in the United Kingdom where that young man isn't on radio or television banging a drum and saying, why are you feeding rubbish to our children? But it wasn't enough. He started to look at the obesity epidemic. And I know many of you know this, but it still is what Jamie was saying earlier. It is a shocking stat that more people will die of obesity than of starvation and hunger and nutritionally deficient related diseases. It's just, it's just a shocking thing. And what we eat and the way we are feeding our children is actually doing this. And when we were in Zurich, Jamie put up a question on the voting systems the year before last and said to the delegates, tell me what you think your life expectancy is going to be. 50, 60, 70, 80, how long are you going to live? And the majority of delegates, I think it was just under 70%, thought that they would live to 70 and maybe just over 70. And the shocking statistic is that that is not so. First generation in human history, yours, will not live as long as mine and you will not live as long because of what we have constructed to feed you, wreck your diets, wreck the way your body consumes its fuels. And when David and I first went to Jamie to say to him, could you come and talk to the world? He said, well, I'd love to because Jamie is absolutely passionate about young people. And he said, but I don't want to because I don't like to talk about things where I don't know what I'm talking about. And I'm an expert on obesity in the UK and of course in the United States. But I don't really know about food in South Africa. I don't really know about food in India. And I said to him, well, you know, somebody has to be an ambassador for this and it's going to have to be you because there is no one else. And he has poured his time into this program. And you saw some of his television in the UK. And you saw him there being given a really hard time by a shock jock on radio in the United States. And there's a terrible clip in one of his films where Jamie burst into tears. So I burst into tears just watching it. Just rage and frustration at what people have been given to eat. But despite negative press there and despite a very public drubbing from a very popular god knows why DJ, just about two months after that program, the pink slime factories in six states in the United States were closed. And this is this young man's work. And I just... He just, he just is so, 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 so special. And every time I look at him in his work and I just think, you know, one of the delegates said a great thing earlier about connect your aptitude with your passion. And there's Jamie's aptitude with food. And not a lot of people know this, but he told us this in Zurich. Growing up, and again, it was a point that came up over there, Jamie has very severe learning difficulties, really very severe. He was a special needs pupil. But this aptitude with food connected with that passion could help save your generation and help you all to live a bit longer. And we want you to.
And I think, you know...
Great, Jamie.
A great example of three things that you should all think about. You know, the first one is he started doing all this about 24. So you know, you are of an age where you can really make a difference. The second thing, and I think the thing that, as we get a great chance to talk with a lot of the people who've done amazing things in the world, the thing that comes back consistently is they started by doing this one little thing and then all of a sudden they became globally famous and this became a huge global movement and they'd never thought that was going to happen. And so I think, you know, just probably sitting in this room is a Jamie Oliver or a Bob Geldof or a Kofi Annan. And just, you know, start, take that action and you'll be amazed at where it can go. And then the other thing is Jamie is like a chef, yet he's kind of metamorphosed from being a chef to being somebody who is actually changing the way the whole world looks at food and thinks about food.
Okay, so what we're going to do now, as we try to sort the satellite link, we're going to bring forward the panel of councillors to discuss these issues. Now each of these plays a huge major role in the food industry. So I want to introduce them to you. Paul Lindley, extremely influential figure in nutrition, especially for babies and young children. He founded an organic food company, Ellis Kitchen, published a groundbreaking report on improving children's health in the UK, averting a recipe for disaster. Welcome, Paul Lindley.
I do love a recipe for disaster. That's such a great title. Wally Frye has dedicated himself to finding alternatives to a high meat diet and to getting the global food industry to adopt production methods that don't have a detrimental impact on the environment. I was very pleased to see that last night at dinner, both Lily Cole and Lauren Bush were eating the vegetarian menu and it was a note to self, I should start doing that. Very famously, he launched the global initiative of Meat Free Mondays. Please welcome to stage Wally Frye. And then to chair the panel, you've heard from already a couple of times, very delighted to welcome back Elio Yedichetti, who is the CEO of Igloo Foods, Bird's Eye, et cetera, et cetera. So Elio.
Okay, now councillors, councillors so you know, delegates so you know. As we try to fix this satellite link, because we've got Jamie waiting in a studio in London, we may be interrupting you to cross if you don't mind forgiving us. We may not be, but we hand over to you, Elio.
All right.
Take it away.
Very, very good. Well, first of all, thanks for trusting the Italian to stay flexible about being interrupted and changing the programs as we go along. I was before lining up and everybody had five delegates, I had eight. It might be because they knew that Italians don't know how to follow rules very well, but you know, we'll see. So, well, first of all, I'd like to introduce Paul and Wally. But rather than hearing what they've done, like David just said, from very few words, they've both have been inspired to open up a food business enterprise activity by a view and a vision. And maybe you guys can tell us a little bit more about where that inspiration, you know, came from. Paul?
Thank you, Elio. So I feel this morning like you guys have come here and it's like a restaurant and you've ordered the top full of steak and we come and we give you the mince, the thrifty mince on stage here. But you know, we can make a great meal out of mince. So as we're waiting for Jamie, we'll tell you our stories and hopefully a little bit of inspiration. Because my story began just eight years ago when I had nothing to do with the food industry, but I had a child, my daughter Ella, and she was a baby. And I used fun and games and mess and silliness to get her to eat foods once she stopped eating foods as a baby and sort of turned her nose up at things that she'd eaten for the first few months of her life. And you know, just as a parent, I thought, wow, you know, it's not rocket science, but if kids find food fun, they're going to eat it. And if you can produce it as healthy food, whether you're just a parent at home or whether you're a company, then you can change the way that kids have a relationship with food at the very youngest age. So I looked around at the marketplace and I thought, you know what, I know a little bit about kids from my previous experience. I've got my own daughter, I can act as a parent, and I can try and change the world. So I set my company up seven years ago from my kids' bedroom with one computer and one phone and no customers and no money. And you know, eight years later, I'm here on a stage and we turn over $100 million and we're in many countries around the world and delighted to be in South Africa from this summer. But the whole heart of what my business is about is to try and get kids to have a better relationship with food so that they can have healthier habits that will last their lifetime from the very youngest age. We get them really early to eat broccoli, to eat asparagus, to have a variety of foods, those sort of things that kids don't traditionally have. And by the time they're 13, they will be eating those things. And by the time they're 23 and 24 and having their babies, they'll be introducing better and a wider variety of food for their kids. So that's my story and I'm delighted to share it.
Very good. Wally.
So Wally, you've been around the food block for a little bit longer than both of us combined and multiplied times.
You can tell by the color of my beard. Well, good day to everybody. And I must just say that I was sitting here during the plenary and I was humbly moved by some of the intellect of the youngsters that were talking on the mics and the bravery of them and their confidence. And I actually had a moment there like Francois where I was a little bit emotional, especially when the lady from Pakistan spoke, it was quite moving. And I'd just also like to say that I'm really, really humbled by the fact that I've been asked to come here and share some experience with all of you today. And I hope that, you know, can make some small difference. So my story started 23 years ago when I was a reasonably successful builder, building shops and offices and factories and things like that. And I was living in this strange environment where my wife was a born vegetarian and I was an avid meat eater. And she, you know, would speak to me about vegetarians from time to time and I thought she was crazy. Because I had this, the approval of society to believe that unless you eat meat, you won't grow big and strong. And my dad told me that and I believed it. So another thing happened a little sort of later on. I was very proud to build a factory farm structure that housed 4,000, what they call a 4,000 sow unit. So sows become units and they, there's 4,000 of them in this fantastic building that I built. I was very, very proud of it. I had pictures of it in my construction office wall. And one day I went back there to do some maintenance work, snag work as we call it as builders. And then for the first time, I witnessed firsthand, 4,000 sows lying underneath steel bars from the time they, you know, they're impregnated, they're lying in a steel bar on their sides, they eat on their sides and their babies can drink from one direction. And then these babies supposedly grow up and they become a thing called baconers. And then they get shifted into a different part on a conveyor, into a different part of a place. And then from there, they move to a different part of a place which shovels them onto a truck. And I was there to witness that. And suddenly my pride turned into a little bit of shame. And I think that was their first epiphany I had where I realized that it wasn't a good thing that I had helped to create. So then another thing happened. I was flying over Botswana in a light aircraft. And this was the most amazing thing to me that really, really triggered and switched my mind on. I looked down over the landscape below the airplane and they have these things in Botswana called cut lines. And these cut lines delineate by fence areas where wildlife reside and areas where cattle reside. And I looked down at this cut line and on one side of the cut line was a desert, just a dust bowl. And on the other side of the fence, it was green and lushes and bushy. And I asked the pilot over the earphones, I said to him, so what's the deal down here? Why is the ground different on this side? He said, oh, that's the side where the cattle are. And the other side is where the wildlife is. So then I did a little bit of research and I came to the conclusion, accurate conclusion, that within the area where it was green and bushy and natural, there were more head of antelope per square kilometer than, way more than on the side where the cattle are. So it struck me that we farm with cattle in the world and you know, they destroy our environment, cause erosion and one thing and the other. And I started to research and follow this line of thought. And all the time, I'm having my wife Debbie telling me, hey, you know, you're eating, what's that you're eating? I said, it's a drumstick. She said, no, it's not. You play drums with a drumstick. And what's that you're eating? And so, you know, she would tell me the truth about what I was eating. I'm eating a chicken's leg and so on. So eventually I had no choice but to decide to become vegetarian. That was about 27 years ago. And then when I became a vegetarian, that was the big problem. That's when the big problem struck me. I decided that I was sick and tired of eating broccoli and spinach 24 hours a day and a bit of pumpkin thrown in. And then the regular diet for vegetarians apparently is spinach and feta all over the world. So...
You should try some peas. Peas are very good.
Yeah, but every restaurant says spinach and feta, you know. So we, I mean, the restaurants are developing now, don't get me wrong. But so I decided that I would, I was really missing the taste of meat on my plate and the protein value that it was giving me, you know. And at that stage, I was very, very participating in sport at quite a high level, so I needed protein. Anyway, I decided that I would try and develop something that looked and tastes like meat with as many natural ingredients as I could find without using any product or byproduct that comes from the system that factory farms animals in the world. And so as a, from a builder, I became a makeshift food scientist, if you want to call it that. And over a period of two years, I developed a small range of foods that I could call tasty and I could put with my veggies and salad. And in those days, we were producing between 7 and 50 kilograms a day. We still go out with passion into the world, supporting the ideology of helping people understand the environmental damage that livestock farming is doing on the planet. And we will probably produce 7,000 tons of fries this year, probably.
So what we're going to try and do now is if you can pause that, if you guys can stay here, because A, we want to continue the panel afterwards and B, the satellite link may not work. I was up on the roof for about half an hour. But if we can go and cut to the theoretically perfectly working satellite link. So back to the beginning, please, Amy. Hi, guys. Good morning, everyone. Hope you're well. Ah, now I can't hear you at the moment, they've switched me off, but I've been told to go. So if I can go, put your hands in the air if you can hear me. Five seconds delay. Hands in the air if you can hear me. Yay! Look, the lovely Kate is there, looking beautiful in a One Young World t-shirt, as usual. Okay, guys, well, let me crack on. Firstly, it's always an honor to be able to talk to lovely people representing so many countries in the world. It's an honor and a privilege. And I hope I can say a few things to drum up some enthusiasm about food and our beautiful planet and our wonderful countries and the health of our brothers and sisters and friends. So first up, I'm so sorry that I couldn't be with you in person this year in beautiful Johannesburg. I was supposed to play in a little video, maybe they'll play it at the end, but I don't believe they've played it in. But if they have, then great, but I might be behind on the technology. But basically, the video shows you where we are right now with some of the things that I've been battling over the last 10 years. Now, most of this footage is from America, Britain, and Australia because that's where my foundations currently are based. But don't be fooled into thinking this problem is just in these countries. Whether it's diet-related disease or hunger or food inequality, this is a global problem that will affect us all. The key to it, of course, in my belief, that affects in a positive way all of our countries, is food education, inspiring people to understand food. Now, I don't want to be the bearer of bad news. I don't want to tell you that we haven't got enough water on this planet and that's going to be a big issue in the next 50 years. I don't want to tell you that 2 million people will die as a result of obesity this year and 2 million, sadly, 2 million children will die from undernutrition. I don't want to tell you that if our methods and habits don't change, we're going to run out food with our growing populations. You there today are the first generation expected to live shorter lives than your parents. And diet-related diseases are among the world's biggest killers. And of course, the thing that is important and, you know, important for us all is that it's all preventable. We can prevent these things. So I don't want to give you all the doom and gloom. I'm going to leave that to Bob Geldof. He's very good at that, okay? So I want to focus on the positive today. I want to try and get you guys inspired and hopefully feel part of something and something that we can all share in. So let's talk about what the world and some of the things, some of the great things happening around the world is. So this year, global, well, this year for the first time, global targets were set in the World Health Assembly to reduce deaths from lifestyle diseases. And these were to be done by 2025. These targets include reducing salt intake by 30%. And by the way, this applies to nearly all the countries in the world. To reduce blood pressure by 25%, to reduce the marketing of unhealthy foods and drinks to children. And countries needed to act fast and some have already. So let's talk about some of the countries that have already got involved. Chile, for my friends in Chile today, where the Chilean government have banned the use of toys to advertise fast food and junk food. Fantastic. Right here in South Africa, targets have been set to reduce obesity by 10% and increase the control of diabetes by 30% by 2020. Important stuff. In France, they've gone straight in. Hello, the French contingency. The French government have put a tax on sugary drinks and that came into action in 2012. And the money raised from this goes to support farm workers. I love it. In India, they've launched a five-year national plan to reduce NCDs, that's lifestyle diseases. And that's very important. In Peru, they've recently implemented a law promoting healthy food for children and banning junk food advertisement and the sale of junk food in schools and reducing trans fats and all those lovely things. So this is my third, this is my third year talking to all of you lovely people at One Young World. And today, I wanted to use this opportunity to introduce four delegates that are with you today to come up. you today, to come up, please come up now, come towards the microphone, and I'll introduce you now. We've got the lovely Pearl from South Africa, hometown, Alexis from Ecuador, Kelsey from Pittsburgh, USA, and Roy Ha from Kuwait. Come on down, guys. And these guys are going to spend a couple of minutes telling you about some of the work that they've been doing in each of their countries. Over to you guys.
All right, good morning to you all. Well, the situation in South Africa is twofold. A large portion of the people in South Africa are living in hunger, while those that are food secure are either obese, and some are at the risk of developing lifestyle diseases such as diabetes. And the Ministry of Health this year has introduced an NCD strategy that's aimed at making sure that these diseases are preventable. So I come from an organisation called Ambassadors of Hope, which was established last year by a group of five girls. So what we do is that we run a soup kitchen in the township in Haidelberg. We are trying to target those households that are childhood-headed. So what we do is that we go every two weeks, and then we give out soup kitchens to these families. What we've noticed throughout the year is that most of these kids, the only meal that they have is the one that we give them in that two weeks. And what we've established now is that we're encouraging them to have food gardens that are established in their backyards. So we're now in the process of having them plant things like spinach, carrots, and also cabbage. And early this year, no, around July, in order for us to mobilise the community to help us with our food garden and also our soup kitchen, we were featured in one of the music videos that was spearheaded by one of the hip-hop artists in South Africa. And the impact that we've seen thus far is that from only five people that were involved last year, we are now twenty-five that are helping out every second Sunday. So my message for you today is for everyone to go back to their home countries and make sure that you play your part in food security, because one hungry child is one too many. Thank you.
Oh, okay, yeah. Hello, I'm Kelsey from Pittsburgh, and Jamie Oliver came last year to visit us at the One Young World summit, and his visit was extremely catalytic. We created a successful Food Revolution Pittsburgh group in Pittsburgh, and we had seven main initiatives. And these ranged from increasing access to gardens within the city, improving nutrition education within the schools, encouraging families to actually sit down and have a meal together as a family without screen time once or twice a week, improving employee wellness programmes, and the project that I worked on, which was the Food Revolution Cooking Club. So we went into high schools, and we taught kids how to cook, and we gave them the tools they needed. One of the really awesome things that we saw is, over the course of this year, people started really paying attention to Food Revolution. And one of the reasons we were so successful is that we partnered with the University of Pittsburgh, and their MBA students ran a social awareness campaign for us. So within the first week, we had something like sixty thousand YouTube views in Pittsburgh about our work that was being done. And that's only one example of the way that Pittsburgh really positively interacted with Food Revolution. Our team raised thirteen thousand dollars in just a few short months by putting on dinners and events, so that as we were educating students and empowering them, and bringing in local, you know, chefs and celebrities and restaurateurs from Pittsburgh, we were also giving them the tools they needed to succeed when they left. So all of our students left with supplies and cookbooks that they would like to read. I'm really excited because we had a great Food Revolution Day, and we're looking forward. So there's a team in Pittsburgh, Bobby Fry's heading up, doing, expanding this project into other schools. The work that I do is, I'm a food service director, and I do healthy school lunch, so we're trying to partner these two things together. With bringing communities into schools, and organisations into schools, to give education to these kids about food, and partnering this with the quality of food that these kids are eating, we're going to come out with a really strong product in Pittsburgh, and we're extremely thankful. Jamie, thank you for inspiring me to be a lunch lady.
Hello, One Young World. Hello, Jamie, I'm a very big fan of you. So, people in Ecuador, and I think in every other developing country, used to think that obesity was a problem of developed countries, like the US or the UK. Ten years ago, our main food-related problem was malnutrition, but that is no longer true. In fact, today, in my country, twenty-two percent of the population is obese, according to the Food and Agriculture Organisation. And the first cause of death is diabetes, followed by heart diseases. So we in Ecuador used to eat a lot of carbohydrates, like potatoes, rice, plantains, cassava, and so forth. Why? Because we produce all of them locally, and because they are cheaper than protein. So to address these subjects, the government has launched programmes to prevent the consumption of carbohydrates in the school and high schools by regulating well-balanced menus and including more fruits, and more fresh products produced locally. Also, eliminating fried food sales on the school grounds, so that children have limited access to unhealthy food choices. Just the last week, the Congress has started a bill project that will regulate and prohibit the advertising of junk food in the media. And we, at the Department of Agriculture, are promoting the production of healthy food like quinoa, due to its high protein content and due to its high nutritional value. So besides these efforts of the government, I think it is not enough to force the kids and tell them in the schools what to eat and what not to eat. I think we must, and it's extremely important, to educate the parents in this subject, because they are the ones that ultimately will take the decision on food choices at their homes. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Hello, Jamie. My name is Raquel Hadri from Kuwait, and my case is not very different from my fellow delegate. Kuwait is a very small country with an estimated population of 2.7 million, and unfortunately, due to our small size, we have reached number one in obesity in the past couple of years. And what we're trying to do through our project, fitfootball.net, is launch social and health initiatives, to, social and health initiatives, to bring together the required elements to encourage and encourage everyone to have healthier lifestyles. Since 2010, we have successfully involved more than 1,500 members, from men, women, and children, who have joined us at least once into actively changing their lifestyles. We have also launched our diabetes awareness campaign for children, together with the help of six doctors, aiming to also continue and educate the kids to take charge and actively change their diets. And hopefully, with the support of both the Ministry of Education and the Ministry of Health with the specialists in the food industry, we will continue in creating projects and social campaigns to actively reduce obesity in Kuwait. And that's it.
Hello.
Okay, guys.
Can you see me, Jamie?
Hello.
Can Jamie see me? Have we lost it?
I can see you, you look beautiful, come on!
No, you do, you do. I just wanted to tell you that you've got thirteen hundred food ambassadors here from a hundred and ninety countries. And we love you. And we miss you so much. Thank you, Jamie, everybody, thank him!
You too, I'm just sad I can't be with you today. Thank you. Okay, so I've got a little finishing up to do, I hope that's all right, unless you cut me off, of course. So look, we've heard from four of our ambassadors there in Johannesburg. You know, I think we're starting to get a sense, guys, I know I'm British, I'm here, Big Ben's there, and sometimes some of the stories and the references that I give are quite Western, but hopefully you're all clever enough to know that this is a global problem. The difference between obesity and hunger is not that far, they're very, very interconnected. Too much of the wrong stuff, or not enough of the right stuff. Hopefully you all agree that whether it's countries in Africa, or China, or Europe, you know, inspiring our young children, primarily the best place to do that is at school, is a priority. Structuring that through governments, local governments, national governments, to make food education a priority is imperative. At the same time, just like one of our delegates said, that's not enough. We can't just expect the government to do it all, although they need to do a lot more everywhere. So we need to do more. We talked about the parents, the parents need to step up. But for lots of reasons, that is also very tough. We've got three generations of parents that maybe didn't know how to cook, or how to nourish their families or themselves properly as well. So in a funny kind of way, and I'm generalising here, I think that focus on children and schools and communities is a beautiful thing. And I believe also that this is the first generation where the parents can learn from their children about food, about the planet, about farming, about how the food they eat affects their body, how they can live longer, how they can feel better, how they can be happier through the food they choose or don't choose to eat. I don't think the solutions are about necessarily banning all these foods that are bad for you. Yes, there's a lot of controls that need to be put in place, because too many companies or big kind of agro businesses, they've got away with too much, but I don't think it's about banning everything. I think, I think it's about inspiring people to love food, and to love what food brings to their community, to themselves, to their pride, to their families, and how it makes them feel. So let's just move on very quickly. Eighteen months ago, we learnt, we launched the Food Revolution Day. Okay, all the projects that I do, of course we work throughout the year, but we wanted to focus it on a day. And we set up a global ambassador programme. With a programme, just, well, in the first year, we have over six hundred and seventy ambassadors in eighty-five countries already. One of our Food Revolution ambassadors from South Africa is right here right now, and I'd love to introduce to the mic again now, Virginia. Please, give it up for Virginia, please.
Good morning, One Young World. I joined the Food Revolution Ambassador Programme because I am currently studying to be a chef, and so Jamie Oliver is my hero, and I have a really deep passion for food. And I want to say to you all today that in order to be a part of Jamie's movement, you don't have to be a distinguished name in the industry, and in fact, his movement relies heavily on people like you and me. And I didn't join to stage a revolution in one day, I joined to simply take a stand in the fight for real food, and to contribute in small ways. So for example, I've started a kitchen garden project with a group of six-year-olds, and the response has been really positive. And there's something really empowering about working with children, because they are so receptive to your enthusiasm, they're so receptive to engaging activities. And food education with children is something that I feel really strongly about, because I've read Jamie's statistics, and twenty percent of children in Australia think that pasta comes from animals. And as Jamie said, today's generation of children are the first ever to live shorter lives than that of their parents, and that is absolutely terrifying to me. So this is all because of a complete lack of food education. And I found Jamie's ambassador programme to be really empowering, because he's created such an excellent platform for our voices to be heard, and for us to initiate change in our communities. Jamie is such a proactive and inspirational leader in his campaigns and his philosophies, and I would really like to join him on that. And I would like to extend the invitation to everyone sitting here today to become a part of the revolution. And you heard Jamie, they've got six hundred and seventy ambassadors in eighty-five countries, I mean, this is massive. And we are the youth, and if we want to be, we can be an incredibly powerful catalyst of change. So I really want you to think about it, and get in touch, and get involved in the Food Revolution. You can apply online at Jamie's website, and join us in this, join us in the fight for real food. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, it's really nice to hear from you, Virginia. And I apologise to everyone for the five-second delay, but I'm sure you understand. The Food Revolution only stands a chance if we have more people like Virginia. We currently have eighty-five countries represented in our programme. There is a hundred and ninety countries in One Young World today. That's a hundred and five more countries that we would love to have on board. So my ask today is very simple, please join us. And if I may, you know, we've got a link, hopefully if the technology works, in the screen below me, there's a link, and you can link up with an existing ambassador, or you can sign up to become one yourself. And just get in touch with us, we have a dedicated email that we've put in place for you guys. And we're going to start, this is very new for us as well, you know, not just One Young World, which I love deeply, but also the Food Revolution, and of course, they work perfectly together. But we want to get more people involved. So get in touch and tell us what food issues you have in your country, and even in your neighbourhood, and, you know, the email is below, so just send it to us, we'll be looking through it. And in case you missed it on the video, Food Revolution Day this year is confirmed for May the sixteenth, 2014. So why is Food Revolution Day important? Well, I'm doing my bit to sort of try and pull in all the information from around the world, all year. We all felt it was important to have one day to focus, and I would love you people from One Young World to also be involved. Why is it important? The whole point, I think, what I've learnt from looking at many, many people around the world trying to do wonderful things, there's many people doing incredible things, but it's quite lonely trying to make change. Making change is uncomfortable for us humans, we don't like it. So if you're one person, one mother, one father, one family, or just a little group of people, making change, important change in your communities, in your schools, in your local government, national government, getting your radios, your newspapers, your TV locally to talk about these issues, it can be very hard, and it can be very, very lonely. And one of the whole reasons of One Young World being formed is because we have this opportunity to learn from each other, be inspired by each other, but also to give each other power and confidence and strength. And that's what I want to do today, and that's what I want to do with Food Revolution Day. Hopefully, under the Food Revolution Day, we can make some big noise next year. So guys, sign up, please get in contact with us, I'll keep you in, I'll tell you what's going on and how we're doing stuff. But pretty much, this is it from me. If you are on your smartphones, and I'm sure you all are, please feel free to follow me on Twitter, or I'm... Or on Instagram. Well, listen, I'm not sure if Jamie will pop back or not, but that was quite amazing, we actually managed to pull it off after the technical difficulties we had. A huge thank you to the panel for their patience, and we will now go back to the panel. Elio, take it away.
Jamie, this is for him, even if he's gone. What an inspiring programme, what an inspiring person he is for food in general. And who would have said, he actually made British cuisine well-known, which was probably not a pre-Jamie concept altogether.
Only an Italian could get away with that.
So, very good. So we heard about the Food Revolution, and I think we heard a lot about, you know, what it means, and what the man with the spoon wants to do with it. Now, a question to my fellow panellists, do you think that the Food Revolution has actually started, Paul?
Well, first of all, five fantastic, inspiring speakers here, who, each one of them, and I'm sure there's many, many more people in the room, who create these little ripples that become waves. And, you know, each of those spoke to fifteen hundred people in the room here, and a hundred thousand people around the world through the link. And so, the revolution has started from that respect, and what Jamie, he's already got a wave, and his wave is crashing down on governments, and that's just fantastic. a wave, and his wave is crashing down on governments, and that's just fantastic. But actually, we ought not to get that complacent because we have improved nutrition coming through, and there are good things coming through, but when you look at the causes, the direction where nutrition is improving, you find that about 75% of it is coming from manufacturers improving their formulations and the governments nudging them and some of the government initiatives we heard. And actually, only 25% is coming from us, me, my family, you, your family, and all of our friends. And you know, that's frankly not good enough, that's not good enough of my generation and the way I brought up my children and my friends bringing up their children. And please make it be, when you bring up your children, if you've got children, as you're bringing them up, make it, it is not good enough. We have got to change ourselves, and it's a whole collaboration between ourselves, our communities, our businesses, the retailers and government, and we've got to be in this one big tent to solve this problem together. As well as the five speakers there, from my company, Ella's Kitchen, a small company, we've got two delegates here today. Stick your hands up guys, I don't know where you, make some noise, noise! You make it in the office! Okay, so we've only got 60 people in our company, and we've got 16 people under 30, and 13 of them have applied to the two places we could get to come here. But what's happening is those two girls are going back with the other 11, and those 13 are going to do a project for Ella's Kitchen, which will help us on our journey to produce even better, healthier food to reach even more people. Now that's because I built our business, and all of our team is passionate about being profitable and being for a purpose. And when more and more businesses bring those two things together, we will influence more and more families, more and more consumers, to make a difference in their lives because they're the ones that ultimately buy the shares in these companies and buy the products from these companies. So that's just a small example of using a little company, we're only a little company, we can make a big difference. So Kate was very kind to say that earlier this year, we produced a report called "Averting a Recipe for Disaster", which was based on the UK, but it's the same in so many of the countries that we sell our products in around the world, and I'm sure every country. And the idea from that report came from two newspaper articles I saw about a year ago. The first one said that out of the girls born in the UK last year, a third of them will reach their 100th birthday. You know, that's fantastic, and when the health guys get into that, that's just totally good news. Two days later, there was a different article that said by 2050, a half of all adults in the UK will be obese. Right, and that's the children that were born this year and last year again. So if you look back at it, for our society, and I'm sure it's the same in many, many countries around the world, you've got children being born today, 50% of them may become obese, and a third of them will live to 100. And how is that gonna, that's not a health issue, that's a society issue, so that's something we, you guys, and your leadership have got to deal with. But hunger and obesity, as Jamie was saying, are two sides of exactly the same coin. And where I come from, and my company comes from, and my passion comes from, is not only taking children as the starting point, but taking babies and toddlers and preschoolers, because there cannot be a too early age where you teach them good habits about food. If I just ask you to do one thing very quickly, if you all close your eyes and think of the best meal that you've had in the last six months, if you just do that and go back to where the last meal was, and sir, please don't keep your hands to yourself over there, but I bet you are thinking not only of the taste of the food that you had, and the quality of the food, and actually the meal itself, but you'll be thinking of the friends that you were with, and the location of that restaurant or at home, and the service that you had, and the entertainment, all your senses will have been stimulated. And that's exactly the same as a baby sitting in a high chair, or nursing, or weaning, they are stimulated from everything that's coming to them. So that if we can make them appreciate all of their senses and stimulate all of their senses, and treat food not just as a functional thing that they have at a mealtime throughout their lives, but it's a social thing that binds us together, then they will have a better relationship with food, they will try more foods, and they will have more of awareness and teach their parents education about food. They will be more inclined to cook and prepare foods. You get a toddler involved in food preparation, just stirring, just shaking, making a game out of going to the shop, being involved in making the shopping list, all of those things. By the time the food comes out of the oven, that toddler will feel involved in that food and more likely to try it. So there's a whole lot of work we can do, you guys can do, we can do. A man of 46 can say that he's got youthful spirit like you guys, we can do it together, but you can't start too early.
Thank you, I think that's a very, very powerful thought, and I was actually receiving before a couple of questions from the delegates, and I'd like to link it to what I've heard from the Chilean delegate as well before. The education of children and what you said before, the engagement and the whole experiencing is very important. A lot has been done in schools, a lot has been done in education, a lot more needs to be done. We believe in Igloo, the company that are run, that there is a lot that family needs to do as well. And I think that the product that goes through the family with the kids onto their plate, it's a very important, it's a very relevant message, because it comes with an emotional bonding that is not just the one that you can have in school and education, it comes with the whole emotional side of things. And the quality and the type of food that you feed is clearly going to stay with that, you know, habits for a while. Wally, let me ask you, I mean, we have a clear problem between the food availability, the risk of having too much or too little, and the production. And you know, there is an expectation that by 2050, which is not that far away, we will need 100% more production to feed the current habits. So should we change the habits or should we change the production?
Okay, I'm glad you asked me that question because it's something that I feel that I can answer. So because I approached this question from a slightly different point of view, well, 100% agree, what's not to agree with what the previous speakers, Jamie, have just said about enthusing, you know, from a young age. I've got four grandchildren, and we do exactly that by the way, so, and they are involved in cutting cucumbers and things and knowing what they're eating. So what we do is we go out from a slightly different point of view to educate people, and this year in South Africa, we're probably educating, we're trying to educate 110,000 people by the end of the year in school, that's school-going people, with our project that's called Meat-Free Mondays, to encourage people to eat less meat. So the reason for that is, there's just a couple of statistics I'd like to share with you quickly, that go straight to the question of why don't we have enough food and why won't we have enough food for this burgeoning population that we are projecting into the future? So here's a fact that may astound some of you, and a lot of people don't know this, but if you do, forgive me. Around, I'm gonna be general here, I can really pull out really, you know, very, very accurate figures, but around 70%, between 60 and 70% of all grain crops grown on planet Earth are grown to feed animals. They're not grown to feed humans. And the worst thing about those grain crops is they generally are subsidized by their governments so that the beef and the meat industry can survive. The beef and the meat industry are very, very huge employment, and you know, they're huge industrial machine, so they see it as necessary to subsidize the farmers so the farmers can give, you know, the people that are raising animals in horrendous factory farms, you know, layers and layers upon layers of animals on top of each other in factory conditions, so that they can feed them cheaply so that we all can get what we call cheap meat. Most of the cheap meat has got antibiotics in it, and some of it's also together with, you know, growth hormones, because they need to get these things that they call, that we like to call animals have just become, you know, machines, they need to get them to a certain weight of protein conversion from all this corn and barley and everything they've been eating, they need to get them to this weight in a given time. You can only do that sometimes by the introduction of hormone, you know, to grow them, just like the weightlifters, you know, they'll have a bit of what we call in the weightlifter, well, I heard them refer to it as a little bit of juice to get big and strong, the same thing with cattle. The other thing about this meat that people are eating is that most of these animals were never designed, never designed by our creator to eat grain or proteins from, you know, from bio-waste. So this meat that we're eating firstly is not good for us. And the second thing about it is that if the governments switched their efforts to subsidizing farms to produce those grains and vegetables and whatever they can produce in their area, in their eco area, for humans instead of animals, we certainly wouldn't have malnutrition. So what it is, it's very hard to get hold of grain at the right price if you're a human, but it's very easy if you are, for example, a beef farmer. So I think really that one of the things that, you know, we needed to drive was the effect of going around to the children and explaining to them some of the things that are going on so that they can make a choice to maybe just not eat meat once a week, or even more if they can. I've been a vegetarian for 27 years, and I'm quite fit and healthy, and so that's where I see the possibility, there's enough place on planet Earth to grow these crops, but we need to be feeding them to humans and not so much to animals. And in order to do that, the demand for animals has to go down a little bit. I'm not advocating that everybody become a vegan or a vegetarian tomorrow, but we could moderate, we could moderate and change a lot of things on planet Earth, especially environmental degradation, which is just killing, you know, our chance of survival. So that is my message, I think, in line with what Jamie said, is just we can have enough food, we can have enough water, we've got to change what we eat. There are eight billion people demanding food three times a day, you know, especially in affluent countries, and whatever they choose to eat will affect, you know, planet Earth.
And I was gonna add to that, I mean, I think, you know, I don't worry that we can't feed ourselves in 50 years' time, I think we're smart enough to work out, the yields of agriculture have grown and grown and grown despite GM and pesticides and stuff, which are in my view a very bad thing, but have grown. So the problem is, it's the systems that we work in. You know, we've got this screwed-up system where you've got people here from countries which, you know, obesity has not yet hit, and it's all about getting enough food and enough nutrition, and there are people malnourished there, and there are other countries where the whole problem is obesity. So we've got enough food, it's just completely consumed in the wrong way. Each one of us, I bet, puts too much food on our plate for what we need. We teach our children to eat too much food. The supermarkets are all set up to give offers, to bog off offers, buy one, get one, free offers, all the time, which encourages us to buy food, and we waste it. So we could talk about waste in terms of being able to feed the planet as well. But most saturated fat and sugar in our food comes from people buying it when it's on offer in the supermarket. So we've got to change that whole thing of the supermarkets doing things like that, but we've got to do it as people. We can't expect businesses whose first idea, first reason for being is profit, and the good businesses will have purpose as well. Governments are there to help us when we don't see the right thing, we've got to do it ourselves from this place with our leadership in our communities.
Thank you, Paul. I think it's probably time to, thank you. It's probably time to wrap it up. The points I think that we've all heard is that food is life, food is culture, food is both survival, and it is, you know, a way to represent what we feel, the senses and the experience that we have. And it's a very powerful thing under any perspective, and whether companies that like, you know, our own makes 2.3 billion fish fingers every year, companies that feed, you know, and are dedicated to children, or alternative, you know, way of looking, or Jamie Oliver, you know, Food Revolution, it all boils down to the education about what we eat and to the relevance to make sure that we eat what is appropriate for the future of ourselves, of our family, of our kids. And you guys are here collectively representing the world. I think the food is one of the most important things in life that we all have, and I'm sure that you all will give it the right importance in your thoughts, going back and getting those discussions into action. Thank you.
Thank you for the panel. Thank you so much.
Thank you to Wally, Paul and Elio, knowing and thank you so much guys.